Good evening, welcome to the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Brew. We have a quorum present with councilmembers McKenzie, Karn and Arnold. So we will get started at 6:04 PM. Madam Clerk?
First agenda item, discussion on a special event from Atlanta Track Club to hold the Jerome Sales Southside 5 Mile on January 24th, 2026 at the College Park MARTA Station from 5:30 AM to 11:00 AM. This request is from Quinny Brown Deputy City Clerk. This event will be held throughout the city.
Greetings Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Just one small correction, it's not throughout the city, they're seeing Ward 3. I missed read the map on that one. Apologies. As you said, this is Jerome Sales, Southside 5K by Atlanta Track Club. For the past five years I've been here, this has been a repeat event, we've never had any issues from them. They are great working with us, as well as surrounding areas, they usually start at the MARTA Station. Everything is covered from there. I do have Emily here if you do have any questions on this event.
Alright, anyone have any questions? Alright, thank you Ms. Brown.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second agenda item is presentation regarding the proposed collaboration from Trees Atlanta for tree planting and care plans on Main Street and East Main Street. This item is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tim, Jamelle McKenzie.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tim?
I do not see, this may be him coming in now.
Mr. Vincent Cara, hello, how are you? Come on down.
You're right on time. Alright, we have been working with Trees Atlanta, they, and, on getting some beautiful trees planted on Main Street, so. Yes sir, thank you sir.
Thank you, apologies for being a few minutes late, Council, I don't mean to hold you up like that. I'm very happy to be here though with you guys tonight just to talk a little bit about tree planting and to see if we can get your approval for some planting out here on Main Street. As you may be aware, Trees Atlanta has been around for about forty years. We have partnered with the City of College Park on a number of occasions over the last fifteen years, including some plantings over the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center out here on Main Street about eight years ago and a few other places. So definitely have experience here in working with the city. We work with thirteen other municipalities around Metro Atlanta. We do front yard tree planting, we do right-of-way tree planting, park planting and so forth. And we do that always in communication and in concert with the community whenever possible. We look to get the community buy-in and look to get the community to come out and assist us with the planting itself. So Trees themselves, as you can see on the slides here, many benefits, I won't run through too many of those, but certainly cleaner air, cleaner water, stormwater interception, beautification, and frankly higher property values and slower traffic as well when they're planted in the right locations. We will plant this year a total of over ten thousand trees around the metro area. About five thousand of those will be planted with community volunteers. And so it's something we're very excited about, it's been really at the core of what we do since we started way back when. We plant between October and March. And so the proposal that we're going to talk to you about this evening is for a planting sometime between now and March 31st of 2026, of whom we would like to do this. The important thing, one of the important things about our planting, not only including the community, is that we have a two-year maintenance program. We take care of all the maintenance on those trees for the first two years, so the city doesn't have to worry about that. That includes watering, is the most important for the first year. That also includes tree pruning at the end of the second year, which is important because we want those trees to grow up and straight and to stay out of your sidewalks and out of your roadways. And we also have a two-year warranty. So if those trees die at any time in those first two years, we will come back and replace it at no cost to the city to give you a little bit of peace and love. Importantly for our conversation this evening, the proposal is to plant trees on Main Street. And so very importantly there because there are power lines and there are other utilities nearby. The right tree in the right place is very important, and so the trees we're proposing are smaller trees, getting a maximum size of twenty-five feet, which is approved by Georgia Power, to be planted under their power lines. So that's very important. And so the right tree for the right place is something that we hold true to and try to make sure that we put the right tree there so that it's not going to cause me problems in the future. Now this is going to be difficult to see, but this is the proposal that, and by the way, I didn't, I don't know if I introduced myself. I am Mike Vincent Square, I'm the Business Development Director, which means I am, I work with our municipal partners and our corporate partners. I am not an arborist. The young woman who put this proposal together is a certified arborist, part of our community forestry plan. And so she has slotted eighty-five trees for potential planting along Main Street. There are, as you might know, many other trees along that same way, along the MARTA line there, along the tracks, in the seven or eight foot planting strip that exists there. And again, we're going to be planting, we're hoping to plant smaller trees there, trees called Perodia, Ironwood, what else do we have? We have some Red Maple and Hornbeam. And again, these are going to be smaller trees that are going to be in the proper place. The beautiful thing about this is that we have private funding for this. We are not coming to the city asking for any funding for these trees. We have some corporate partners who have offered up to plant trees on your behalf and we would like to be able to put that capital to work to help beautify your city. Some of the trees that we have, I'm just going to run through these quickly. Red Maple, there are going to be, based on the plan, about seven trees on the west side of Main Street. So away from the tracks, those are going to be slightly larger caliber in some of the planting areas that are available, the trees used to be there many years ago and have not been there. Red Maple would be one of the trees we'll plant there. This is the Hornbeam, you can see it grows more upright and columnar so that it's not going to get out into the streets or over into the tracks itself. But a beautiful tree, perfect for this location and will stay relatively small and compact. Crape Myrtle, which, there are a number of crape myrtles out there already, they flower twice during the year. And again, stays small and compact, very easy to prune and never causes any problems with infrastructure. And then just two more I'll share with you. The Black Gum, this is one of the larger caliber trees, beautiful in the fall. Not appropriate for next to the railroad tracks, this is going to be on the other side of the street where there's more growing space. And there's just a couple of those. And then this is the Ironwood, which is, you know, fifteen to twenty-five feet tall typically, very, very hardy. The soil over by the railroad tracks is not fantastic for planting, so you need trees that are going to be able to hold up in any type of environment, and this is one that does that very, very well. And that is all the trees, so I apologize if I ran through this quickly, but I don't want to take up more of your time than we need. But really, what we're here to do is to just ask you to consider this proposal. We are available for questions, I can certainly have our arborists talk to someone with your landscape teams or your parks teams to go through this in more detail, I believe that's already been the case with Leanna. But again, there'll be no cost to the city for these and we would love to help beautify your city, so.
Alright, anyone have anything?
I don't have questions, I just have comments. I wanted to just thank you again, I was so excited when Leanna reached out about this project and especially since it was at no cost to the City of College Park and it was gonna, I'm on this, you know, pilgrimage to really revitalize our Main Street, make it beautiful. And several of our residents are extremely stoked about this. One of the questions, I guess, is I know that you've given us the trees that you are suggesting, how open are you to some trees that we might want to plant there?
We always want to plant what our partners want to plant, so absolutely Leanna is open to that. These are trees that she's suggesting because of their hardiness, because of their size and compactness so that it's not going to impact any of your streets or the other infrastructure. But if you have trees that you would like to see, we're very open to that. Now if you come to us and say dogwoods or cherry trees, we're going to say probably not because they're just not going to survive and that, it's tough soil over there, not a lot of area for them to grow. So those types of trees would probably not be on the recommended list, but we are open to suggestions.
Okay, and I'm glad you said that, because that was one of the suggestions and I do, I would still like to pull together some of our residents to get their input on this. But we're really, really excited, grateful, and especially with you all doing the maintenance for the trees for the first two years, which is really critical. So we appreciate this and it's my hope that the council will see it the same way. So thank you.
Councilmember Karn?
Alright, thank you for coming out. I have a few questions. One of my big worries are the size of these trees. Now just listen to your presentation, you mentioned the Persian Ironwood, fifteen to twenty-five feet. This says it grows to forty feet.
That would be an ideal conditions, that's the important thing. The tallest it will get is forty feet, but that is in fantastic soil with lots of other trees around it. We are putting it in harsh conditions there next to the railroad tracks. And that soil is good Georgia clay, very difficult to grow in. And so therefore, that tree is never going to get to forty feet in that particular location. So could it get higher than twenty-five feet? Yes. And these are also slow-growing trees, by the way, they are not going to get there in the next five, ten, fifteen years, it's going to take a long time.
I remember parts of this discussion over twenty years ago, before I was on council here, about some of the same things with the trees around the convention center. And we were told some of the same stuff. Those trees grew to maximum heights and of the Main Street corridor, you know, again, that's Councilwoman McKenzie's area. From what I can tell, it is or at least looks full of trees now. Are we removing the current trees and replacing these trees, or are we adding even more trees along the corridor?
So this will be additional, you're absolutely correct, some sections of Main Street are beautiful already. They have some beautiful mature trees that are growing along there. I can bring the maps, we can share maps with you that shows exactly the areas that we're planting in. And there are wide areas, hundreds of feet long, that have no trees currently. And so we will be filling in those holes with these trees, not, uh...
Okay, and I'm not against the trees, but my biggest worry with planting these trees is the proximity to our sidewalks. The problem we have at the convention center right now, why there are trees being removed, is because when they were planted, we were given some information on what we were planting, but at the same time, I don't know if we knew what we were planting and it was not a great, well-managed situation. And again, this predates all of us up here, including myself. We had double rows of trees and they were, you know, four or five-foot saplings with straps on them. Now they're busting up our sidewalks. And we're having to remove them because they're going to get into the pipes and destroy our infrastructure slowly over time. I want to know some information about some of these trees' root systems in terms of if they're out, in deep, so on and so forth, information there. I'm worried about our sidewalks and what we plant. And it's going to be great for now, five years from now, but twenty years from now, you know, we're in a situation like we're going to be at the convention center. You know, we're removing trees at the convention center right now because our sidewalks are buckling and it's, and they're headed to our infrastructure and pipes as well. So either we remove them now, when they're more affordable to be removed, or if we wait two years where they're far more expensive and we've got to replace hundreds of linear feet of sidewalks that we wouldn't have to replace because many years ago, we didn't know exactly what we were planting. And we were told the maximum heights weren't going to be the maximum heights. And nothing on you at all, but I've heard the conversation before. Not that I don't believe you, but a sixty-foot tree here, I mean, is that, I mean, if that's...
So you are correct, your concerns are well-founded, no question about that. I'm guessing the trees that you're taking out are oaks and magnolias and trees like that that get very large and have very large root balls. The specific trees for this planting, the only ones that get large are the Red Maple, gets to be about forty to forty-five feet typically, and the Black Gum can get up to be about sixty feet. Those are going to be planted on the other side of the street. There are several very large planter areas that are going to have two or three trees apiece in those. Again, it's on the other side away from the tracks, that's the only place those overstorey trees are going to be going. The Perodia and the Hornbeam are the predominant two species along with a crape myrtle and one or two others that I saw on the plan. Those are the ones going along the railroad tracks, they have very compact root systems, very small root systems. I can get some more details from our arborists for you because I certainly want you to be comfortable with those trees going in there.
Well, and, you know, I'm fine with, I think it's going to beautify things. Are the planters a distance away from the sidewalks, or are they the ones integrated into the sidewalks with the grates?
The ones on the railroad track side you're talking about?
Wherever you said the planters were going.
Well, the large trees are going to go in the planter boxes, I'm sorry, that's maybe not the right term. It's a planting area, it's a green space within, it's surrounded by concrete, but it is about twelve to fourteen feet wide is where they're planting those trees.
They're somewhat connected to the sidewalk.
They are, I'm trying to think of if the sidewalk is on that side of the street, but yes, on the side of the street with the restaurants. Captain D's is one of the locations I know where a couple of the trees are supposed to go.
My concern and worry, the proximity to the sidewalks. Because at the end of the day, we can end up having to replace the sidewalks if they're not the appropriate distance for that root system. So I'm not a tree expert, I don't know what we had growing over at the convention center, but I know it's buckling my sidewalks and I know what that costs.
To the Councilwoman's question, we will certainly swap out trees for you if we just, if you're just not comfortable and you've seen some trees do get larger than you hope they would sometimes, but we are happy to swap those out and put smaller trees in.
It's not my area, you know, we extend war courtesy, I'm just bringing it up that I, you know, we just got to be careful how we're doing it and the distance from the sidewalks so that we don't create another problem. It's going to be a beautiful tree, but you have a buckling sidewalk, you know. So just keep that in mind as we go forward and I'm one hundred percent on board. I want a beautiful downtown cityscape, but if we got bad sidewalks, it ain't so beautiful.
Agreed.
Okay, alright.
Councilmember Arnold?
I don't have any questions, I had a meeting with Leanna earlier this year and she shared this map in the plan for the area that was going to impact East Main Street. So I think I got all my questions answered then, thank you.
Councilwoman Breguet?
Thanks for joining us, I just had a couple of questions and a comment. If you go to Savannah and walk down the sidewalks, they got trees that's sixty, seventy, eighty years old that don't have invasive root structures. So I just wanted to make sure that we know that there are species where the root system go down and not wide. And a lot of these specimen trees, we assume that for fifty-nine years, they won't buckle your sidewalk. So I just want to put that out there. Also, do you all help with helping municipalities establish tree ordinances?
We can help advise on that, we certainly have worked with other cities to help revise their ordinances. It's not something that we have a group that focuses on, but we have a team that has been working, for instance, with the City of Atlanta because that's been a very contentious rewrite of the city ordinance. And we can certainly help in that regard, we also know of several of the tree organizations that could assist with you.
I heard all the developers coming this way because y'all want to let them cut down trees. We don't have a tree ordinance that we enforce.
The beautiful thing about the tree ordinance would be that it would also provide you with a flow of funds that you could use to replace trees that had to come out for one reason or another. So that's the one plus of the tree ordinance besides preserving trees.
Okay, that's all I have.
Just want to thank you and Trees Atlanta for the continuing relationship with our city. What you do around the region is so incredibly important and we appreciate being part of that. So thank you so much.
Thanks for inviting us in, we appreciate partnering with you guys, look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, discussion on the 2026 City of College Park Citywide Events, Festivals and Programming. Presentation by Tondia LaPlanch, Athletic Coordinator, Center Supervisor and Quinny Brown Deputy City Clerk.
Hello again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. I'll just go ahead and start my presentation. So in our presentation, we broke everything into quarters of three months. We set them in categories of confirmed to be determined and in our professional days and weeks. The reason why we did this, we also know that you all haven't planned your event calendar for 2026. Now city has somewhat, so we just want to give that breakdown. As far as the professional, the days and weeks, those are things that we celebrate internal. Now some of them do reach out to the community depending on whether they're like public, what is it? Public Safety Week, those reach out. But as you see in January, February and March, we don't have a full calendar, most of our events are going to be in March. And then every first Friday is the Community Drive Event hosted by Mayor Pro Tim. We do have, of course, add to this year, January nineteenth, the MLK Day and the parade. February fourteenth is the College Park Police Senior Violence Day Day Special that is partnered with Councilwoman Gaye, and of course, our Black History Program. Moving on to the next quarter, April, May and June. This segment is mostly full of our professional days and weeks to honor and to celebrate our staff. Of this, we don't have many planned events. The most important of this event is June nineteenth, which is the Juneteenth Parade and Celebration going on. As well as Georgia Cities Week goes to the next quarter. July, August and September quarter, like I said, it's not as many planned. We do have the War One Back to School event that is citywide, it's not War Pacific. Kids Fest, National Night Out. Moving down, the super term, we have the Hispanic Heritage Celebration. Like I said, there's no date for that yet, but it's going to be within that quarter. And then the last quarter is the most of the events, October, November, December, with a lot more. This includes Thanksgiving and Christmas, as well as the very important day, City of College Park 130th Birthday. So looking forward to that. And moving on to our last slide, we like things to consider as far as when we are planning our calendar. The Boys and Men Summit, our conference, doesn't have a date, How to Do Business in College Park. A celebration for Memorial and Veterans Day, the Senior Summit that the mayor hosts, as well as the mayoral meetings and award meetings. Going down further to follow up is the difference between partnership and collaboration versus citywide event. It's mostly for residents to know that even though you all put on your individual events, they are for the board. Now, do you want seventy-five percent of your residents there? Yes, you do, we understand that. That's the way for you all to show that you are tapping into your ward and you're dressing what your ward needs. So residents are free to go to these events. Reduction of last-minute events, I'm not saying we have a lot of rollover events, but a lot of rollover events as in I want an event in two days. We just need to be a little more mindful of that. And then lastly, communication with staff on events, this is mostly for my team. We have the reception desk and we do get calls from residents that are asking what's going on throughout the week. It's hard for our staff to know what you all are doing if you don't share that information with us. Before, when we did advise the Mayor and Council Office, we did kind of know your plans and we could be able to relay that better with our residents. Now we have a hard time giving them that information, unless it is on the Facebook, our social media. But once again, it's hard for us to convey that when we know absolutely nothing of what you're doing. And we don't need to know everything, we just need to know just a good portion of it.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I want to thank you first of all for putting together this amazing list here. This makes it so much easier for us, even though, you know, sometimes you put it in like in the calendar, calendar dates and you lose it. But for me, the way you have put this, it helps because now as we're even looking at additional events perhaps, we see what's going on throughout the city and I think it helps us to plan. As I told you when you reached out to me about our events, my team is actually meeting in the, well, the middle of December. So we're going to have our little strategic retreat to go over all the events. So we'll have just about everything and... So we'll have just about everything, and we'll definitely try not to have pop-ups. But stuff happens, like we had the government shutdown, and so we ended up doing some more pop-up events to accommodate that. But I think overall, this is amazing, this is wonderful. Thank you for your work on this. And like I said, as a member of the governing body, this really helps me because I can plan and I can also plan to support my colleagues as well. Oh, and everything we do is citywide.
Councilmember Carr.
All right. Looks like a pretty good list. I definitely agree with y'all. I think that our staff has to be sure to do a better job of notifying y'all about upcoming events with a little run-up time. With that being said, we also have to do a better job with coordinating with our staff before we let them know at last minute. So we're going to work on that. There are a couple of them that we're missing here. The Christmas Helping Hands, Christmas Dinner and Toy Event. We've had that a couple of years in a row, so we're going to try to keep that going. That's, this year's December twentieth, which I'm sure y'all are aware of. I'm assuming you are. We approved it at the council meeting back in the spring. Also, Boys to Men, which I do every year. That's, the last time we did it was around July, but we're going to try to pick a solid date, area, monthly, a monthly area to do it annually, where it makes sense, but somewhere in there. The other thing I can think of is the How to Do Business in College Park. That's a relatively small event, very small expense. And then Dale, I remember when you first got here, that was, we did one of those. I would like to have that annually at some point at the end of the day. We want to be open for business and we want new opportunities. But again, that's, that's a smaller event, but it is a citywide event, and we want to do that one annually. We need to nail down an optimal date. So maybe we get with, you know, city manager, HR, and figure out what's, what's the best time that, you know, people are looking, you know, to do business. I guess they're always looking to do business. The job fair that we had, the citywide job fair went very well. We had over five hundred people that turned out, and that was, I don't want to say it was last minute, but we needed a little more run-up time with that as well. But it was very successful. So we want to look at continuing that as well. So those are some of the items that will fit into this calendar. I'm going to look at selecting some dates that are appropriate and get with staff and figure out what works best. So outside of those, for me, it looks good. But I want those added in. Again, we got to coordinate some dates and get that together. When do you want to try to finalize this thing?
Well, this is a working calendar, so in, in my opinion, it'll never be a hundred percent complete. We can get to ninety-nine percent because like I said, there are last-minute events, but I just want a working calendar so that we can be able to tell people like, hey, in March, we have these set events, and if anything comes up, communication can get those out.
Okay, so city manager, ninety-nine percent before the end of the year?
Councilmember Arnold.
Thank you. I agree with the, the comments that were made earlier as far as having this visual of all of the events that we have for, the major events that we have for the city. I have one that is missing, that I need to have added to the list, and that is March twenty-first, which is a senior health fair. I did that last year, and I will be continuing to do that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And then there is this list where you had things to consider. I'm, I will just add a comment here in reference to the Veterans Day. Since we do have the Veterans Office here in the City of College Park, I think that it would probably be good for us to partner with them. They have access to all of the veterans, and we can touch them in a way that they probably don't normally get or receive support. So thinking about partnering with the center, the Atlanta Veteran Center there on Phoenix Boulevard. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilwoman Gay.
Can you, can the clerks scroll back up to the events? Okay. That's at the beginning? Well, I just want you to know that at the beginning of the year, we published, we published this, right? And so we sent out to our residents what we thought were official events. And also comes from Gerald's calendar, the calendar he used to do. So I can appreciate this because I didn't even know about half these dates myself. Okay? So we, I just want to let you know, I, I, we're on the same page. I got twenty, I got twenty, you ten. I think you got about twenty. So with that being said, and, and can you also look at the, we got, I guess we got to adopt this, right? Because last year, we adopted the official idea. So we got to adopt this, right? These are just recommendations, right? Some of these are not part of what we voted on.
No, so most of these you, you don't vote on. This is just approved, like, like I said, the working calendar for two thousand twenty-six.
Right, but, but.
Yeah, I think the last year, the ones that you guys did vote on was the holiday section from cultural arts, recreation and cultural arts.
I know we've always voted on official events, but.
We voted on funding. We have to vote, if it's funding, then we vote.
Right. I think last year, I mean, my memory is a little hazy, but I, the ones I do remember you all voted for the past two years was, of course, the inauguration for first women council members. Juneteenth, the Christmas one, and then funding for the War Four Festival as well as Kids' Fest. But there was never a true two thousand twenty-five calendar created.
One more. One more. I don't even see the War Four Festival.
It is, it is.
It's November, I see November seventh, man, day, November nineteenth. Oh, shit. Okay. All right, we good. Only, only, only recommendation I would like to make is I partner, we partner with the senior social. We are actual event that partners with the senior social. We're not the senior social. We're the senior concert that partners with the senior social. Is that right, Chief Rogers? So can you add that, that it's the senior concert slash senior social?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you for setting this up. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, presentation by the CP Historical Preservation Conservancy. This item is sponsored by Mayor Protim Jemel McKenzie.
All right. Thank you. And as John is coming, I am a history buff. I'm not a historian, but I'm a history buff. In fact, one of the things that attracted me to moving to the City of College Park was Historic College Park. And in our Historic College Park, which takes up parts of Wards One and Three, we have a plethora of historic sites and buildings. And the concern is, how do we continue to preserve our history and highlight our history? And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. John Dukes, who's our presenter for the evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna not speak very much. It's going to be a short speak here. I'm gonna let y'all ask, rather you just answer, ask questions. You have the agenda packet in front of you there of how the conservancy is organized. It's not much there to it to read. But I'll just start with a little story so I can make my point. And my story starts long before there were any European settlers here, any slaves, or any plantations, or anything. There were Cherokee Aboriginal Indians living in this area, and it was basically a wilderness area with their, their organized governments and trails and whatever. And so when European settlement came in, this railroad line out here on Main Street was built. And why was it built there? It was built there because it wasn't an arbitrary build. It was built there because that is the highland all around. It's on a ridge line, and it's on the, it's actually sort of a mountain divide between the Chattahoochee River and the Flint River watershed. So that's, that is the ultimate beginning of College Park. That, that railroad was built when this was, there was nothing, it was nothing but trees and wilderness here, and it was a line built to go all the way to Montgomery, Alabama. Why did I tell you that story? I'm just trying to convey to you what the historical society is for. And the society is here to tell those stories, to preserve the evidence, to do the research, to give tours, to have the artifacts, and so forth. So the purpose of the conservancy, which is reason we're here tonight, is to have a separate entity that actually holds and preserves the actual physical buildings such as the Price Barber Shop, the Depot, and other things. So there's the old President's House to Cox College, but that's a private building. Maybe one day it could be in the public domain. That's what the conservancy is for. So that's pretty much, pretty much it. In a summary, if you have any questions, it's your time.
Mayor Protim.
Well, basically, this was part of a brainchild, so I don't have any questions. But I did see it necessary for us to have some type of vehicle. One of the things, again, we, I've visited several cities over the past two years, specifically, I guess it's just with a different eye now that I am serving in this capacity in College Park. And I look at the downtown areas, and, and most of these cities have some type of a museum. They have some type of a society, and we had our historic, we have our historical society. And it's preserving the information, but we needed to go a little bit further and begin to look at how do we actually care for these historical sites that we have that are specifically on city-owned or city-leased properties? I'm very concerned about the condition of the historical society building itself. It's in need of repair. We have the archives of the City of College Park in there, and they're just sitting around. Dust mites, bugs, millie worms eating up our history, our history, our one hundred and thirty-plus-year history. And I just couldn't see that continued to happen. And so as we were making our plans to rent, to upgrade Main Street and prepare this museum, we realized that we needed to have some vehicle in place to make sure that those projects are sustained, make sure that are historical landmarks in the City of College Park, and even to work with homeowners that have historical properties in the City of College Park, even working with some of the, we may expand our historic district. So these are some of the types of things that a conservancy can do, fundraising and managing these projects. And that's why this was important. So I, I want to thank you because you are a member of the Historic Society. You've got a lot of history, and all the persons, Garland Watkins is not here, but he carried this Historic Society for years. I'm also glad that the Historic Society is indeed a 501(c)(3) organization and has been, I think, for more than twenty years, and that the Historic Society will serve as the fiscal agent for the conservancy until the 501(c)(3) paperwork is processed by the government, which I'm hopeful on because now we don't have a shutdown. But we wanted to make sure that we had a parent organization, and then this organization, the conservancy, that's made up of citizens, stakeholders, persons of means who see the value in conserving and preserving historic properties in the City of College Park. So I want to thank you, John. Thank you for stepping up to the plate in so many ways. We're not finished yet. We got about fifteen more projects we're working on, but this is, this is good, and I wanted to thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
All right. Hey, John. All right, yeah, good, good information and, and projects. All right. No questions.
Councilmember Arnold.
Thank you for the presentation, John. I'm just looking through the slides now. I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gay.
Well, you know, my time up here, sometimes I wonder if it's inspiration or imitation because I would like to at least take some credit for putting that out. The conservancy is something that I started, that I'm glad to know that it's transforming. So I do just need to make sure that that goes on the record. Other than that, I do support anything conservation, preservation, okay?
Mayor, Mia?
I will come back to you in one second.
Okay, because I needed to piggyback on that.
Mr. Duke, I don't see anywhere in the supporting documentation that we have about what happens with the $250,000 a year that the conservancy will receive. Is there a budget? Is there a breakdown of how that's going to be used?
Well, it's probably above my pay grade, but, which is zero. I, I, as far as I understand of how, I've read the same agenda packet you have, the way I understand the conservancy, there, there might be money to pay for invoices for people doing some work, but there's, there's the, the complete, I mean, the purpose of the conservancy is to hold the real estate, basically. Keep it in a trust. So.
I don't think so.
You say?
We're not moving title. He thinks we're moving title.
We're not moving title.
That's what he's just saying.
No, we're not moving title.
The service is not transferring title.
Yeah.
But you just said to move.
I'm saying it's just a hold, it's, it's holding and preserving real estate, maintaining.
Can you elaborate on what holding?
Wait, 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 hold on. Wait, where's the budget?
There is no budget yet.
Okay. Mayor Protim.
Yes, first, the first thing is that, no, the conservancy will not own or hold title to any building. The purpose is to manage these properties and to, if there's any upkeep that is needed. And it's a preservation organization. The $250,000, the question there is, and, and Ms. Jeremy can correct me if I'm incorrect on that, is the same as what we were looking at with the Botanical Garden Conservancy. Oftentimes with these types of organizations, you actually have paid board members, and they are maintaining, this is for the maintenance, for instance, even in the case of the museum that will, the conservancy will be overseeing our College Park Museum. There's staffing that is needed as well. And then the conservancy, as they are fundraising, will be contracting individuals. And Councilman Gay, I wanted to say this anyway, I, I do, I truly apologize because I am concerned about sustaining the things that we have in College Park. I remember having a conversation with one of, with the city manager about the reason that we have professional services contracts in the City of College Park. We have a city that has persons who are employed to do specific jobs, but we do not necess, but when it comes to these specific types of projects and programs, we need to bring on professionals that are professionals in that area. It's not fair or right to ask staff that's been hired as an employee or a director over a department to be made responsible for the additional things, especially as we sit up here now with our different community enhancement budgets and projects. This is a very, very progressive group of leaders in these four council members that are seated before you, and we have a lot of things that we want to do to move the City of College Park forward. And so one of the ways that we are doing that is through professional services contracts. So this is basically a contractual amount. We have other contracts that are on the agenda even this evening that I approve of that we. that we don't have a necessarily broken down budget. But that is the amount of money that we are allotting and looking at will be contracted for that organization. And that's, you know, a perfect example, when I ran Ignite, Ignite received a $50,000 contract in the year 2022. There wasn't a budget attached to it, but that was the amount of money that was being given for them to utilize. So, some of it, some of it was budgeted and some of it wasn't. So, I'm not saying that we should not budget, but this is an amount that is given and up to that amount is what the city would be utilizing to have an organization that comes and does the work for us on our behalf in a professional manner and to make sure that this project is sustainable. So, hopefully that has answered the question.
If I may add, can I?
It has actually not answered my question.
Oh, wait, I do want to say one thing. Um, Councilman Gay is the inspiration. Thank you, Councilman Gay. You showed the way on how to do this. And when you were talking about the Botanical Garden Conservancy, what did I say? I need the same thing down here with our historic properties.
I support it 100%. I just need to toot my horn over here. You were going all...
I know, I apologize. I should have started off with saying Roger Gay. I don't have any problems.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, all right. Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me go back to, there is no budget, correct?
There is a budget. The budget is $250,000 to manage the, the conservancy.
Hold on, I'm asking Mr. Duke because he's here making the presentation. So, Mr. Duke, there is no budget, is that correct?
Uh, not the, not, go ahead.
Good evening, council, how are you?
Good evening.
And again, thank you, Councilman Gay. You are correct, it was the inspiration. There is a projected budget of $250,000. Are you asking for a line item budget? That does not exist and very rarely does a line item budget exist in this, in the manner when you're doing these types of things. But there is a general consensus that these projects can be accomplished for $250,000.
Where did that number come from?
My professional experience having done this for over 25 years.
Historical preservation?
You're apparently, you're apparently, no, you're an attorney, right? A public injury attorney. So, even if I broke it down, help me understand what your experience would do to help mitigate the question you're asking.
You said your professional experience. So, I was, I was trying to understand the specifics. Ms. Jeremy, I was trying to understand the specifics of your professional experience.
Go ahead, John, thank you.
I've been coming to council meetings for 25 years. You know this, right, Mayor? You know that, right? Listen, I've been, I've been to, how many citizens in this city has ever sat in every single budget hearing? How many, how many person?
Mr. Duke.
How many persons have ever sat in every budget meeting?
You're out of order. Mr. Duke, I'm asking about the numbers. I'm asking about the numbers, that's it. Where'd they come from? Where did the $250,000 number come from?
So, I, I'm, I'm a citizen here and you're not going to break me because I'm, I'm a, I'm a volunteer citizen here.
Mr. Duke, I'm not trying to break you, I'm just trying to ask the question.
I am, I am a volunteer citizen here. As I said before, it's above my pay grade, which is zero.
Okay.
Okay? Take it up with the staff tomorrow at City Hall, Mayor. Where, where was, where were you, where was anyone when, when all of the Capitol buildings over at the GICC complex were $20 million over budget? Where was the upper over all that? And you're, you're worried about $250,000 when there's, there's, there's millions of dollars of over budget other places. Now, does two wrongs make a right or whatever? I don't know. What, I don't know what your beef is, but take it up with people at City Hall tomorrow, not with me.
Mr. Duke, let me, let me be clear. You're here making the presentation.
I am.
And the, the proposal is for $250,000 this year. And then this contract automatically renews for another $250,000 for the next nine years. So, I'm trying to understand this long-term commitment of potentially $2.5 million and where the numbers come from.
Okay.
I'm not going to apologize for asking about where this money is, like where this, where this is expected.
Ask all you want.
If you don't know, that's fine. That's absolutely fine. That's, that's no problem. Let me ask one more question. So, the CP Historical Preservation Conservancy was actually incorporated last week, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Karen. You guys are troopers.
No, ma'am, we're moving on. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next item is GICC Landscape and Wayfinding Arrival Vision Plan presented by TSW Planning, Architecture, Landscape.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, City Council, City Manager.
Good evening.
We're here to present a presentation with TSW. Consideration of an action request to retain TSW to create a complete action plan with the landscape design recommended to enhance the curb appeal at the Gateway Campus. In order to maintain a high level of curb appeal for the Gateway Campus, TSW is prepared to provide both an arrival plan and a main entrance plan designed based upon the service provided. TSW is the right partner for the framework for our exterior campus vision appeal. And now, I will turn it over to TSW and Kristin to do the presentation.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor. Appreciate the, um, the moment to talk to you guys about this. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Um, so, we're gonna walk through a couple of things fairly quickly today because I know we only have about five minutes. Um, so, first, we're gonna go through what we saw, a couple of design drivers that talk about how we formulated these ideas, um, some concepts, um, and, uh, the, the landscape approach. Um, the, the next steps after this is actually creating the landscape, uh, the planting plan that would get bid to a contractor. Um, but this is, uh, the general idea of, of, um, how this, uh, should, um, progress. So, I'll go through. All right, so, as we know, um, the trees have been a significant problem. Um, but now that there are no trees, there's even a little bit bigger of a problem because now you don't see trees, you see cars. Um, the building is there that you can see, but it's, it's very gray, um, all around and, um, you're really still a little bit disoriented coming in. So, um, the next piece, um, is where we're looking at, uh, the main corner, um, that as you arrive into the site. So, what you can see is, um, we, we break this down into, to four different areas. Um, intuitive wayfinding, which is really important, um, to get into the site, um, activation zones, um, and, and different arrival experiences. Um, and then, of course, the most important thing is Georgia. Um, people might come from all over the country and the world to come here. So, what is Georgia and how do we present ourselves? Next slide, all right, which is intuitive wayfinding. We're gonna start with that. Um, these are some case studies, uh, of, uh, different convention centers that use intuitive wayfinding. The next one, yeah. All right, so, this is just some examples of how landscape can influence wayfinding and how, um, how you present yourselves in that space, um, where there's low planting, where there's high planting, where there's color, um, the types of color, grasses that feel soft in movement. Um, all those things matter when you're arriving on a site. So, the next piece, so arrival experience. And then we can go to the pictures because those are more fun. Um, so, these are example, case studies of, once you actually get up to the building, the fact that there's activity around the building, anything interesting, um, that might be happening, um, plazas that are more engaging. All those things affect how people feel when they are, um, when they come, finally get out of their car, off the train, how do they know where the entrance is? So, the, um, so, yeah, that's the, the next piece, um, is activation. So, these are, there's all, several different ways, sorry. Yep, several different ways that, uh, different areas can be used. We've identified a couple of spaces that, um, make sense on the site. Um, and things like, uh, um, different outdoor events that could be public, some things that could be, um, used for the convention center as a rentable space and exterior exhibition space. Um, there's a lot of different things that can happen, uh, for, uh, for the rentability and also interest for, uh, people passing by. The more you see people having fun, the more you want to have fun, so. Um, and then the last piece is taste of Georgia. So, the next slide is some pictures again. So, these are, um, a lot of different things that feel like Georgia. You feel rocks and water, um, you have really integrated art into the landscape, um, lights. Um, again, landscape is really important to get that feel, um, for the sense of place. All right, now for the concept piece. I think we, yep, that one, perfect. So, these are, again, those same, um, those same areas, um, but broken down into what the concept design is. So, there's an arrival feature, um, some outdoor, uh, linear walk space and then entry features. And the goal is to modernize and to make, uh, currently is to make as minimal hardscape changes as possible while, um, adding certain pieces of it to make the hardscape more consistent across the, across the site and more usable. Okay, so, arrival sequence. Um, this is the front entryway, the, the front entry gateway, the main, the main, uh, entry as you come to site with the really interesting sculptural features. Um, we're proposing to add, um, a, a giant stone fountain as the front piece into the site as you look into, from the road, as you look across. Because right now, all the gateway features are away from the view shed of the, um, of the entryway. So, you see past those on the side. And then, right now, you see through a clearing at the building, basically through a sea of parking. So, we're trying to use that vertical, um, element, um, to kind of mask some of that while you see the building beyond it. And then using landscape as a sculptural form, um, with some color blended in, uh, to, to really enhance that movement and to entice people to move through the space. So, then, the next piece is, uh, is the entry features as you get closer in. Uh, so, again, bringing in some of that sculptural, uh, element, bringing in water and stone. Uh, and then, modernizing the, there's little pockets of landscape that are kind of a leaf shape. Um, but now, right now, there's some haphazard landscape and site furnishings um, that are a little bit small for the scale of the site. So, we're proposing to build, um, so, a more substantial, uh, seating area, making it kind of feel like one holistic space, um, and really identifiable as the entryways. Because right now, it's a little hard to tell where the entrance is exactly. So, we use these features to focus the entry points, um, as you go through. Okay, so, this linear walkway along the side, we have two different, um, options for this. One of them is where you, like I mentioned before, there's a way you can, um, bring some of the inside out and really celebrate what happens there, um, at the convention center, uh, especially being right there between, uh, where people enter the site and, uh, the, the train coming across. When there's activity in that zone, it could be really engaging. Um, and so, we have a couple of sculptural art moments, but otherwise, it's a, a kind of a flatter zone that you can, um, put a lot of different, um, event-type things there. And then the next piece. Um, so, the other option is focusing more on a sculpture and landscape approach where it's a little bit more of a, an interesting walk, um, but it's, um, it's focused more on a passive, like a passive space. And then, talking about plant material, so, one of the things we wanted to propose, um, the interior of the, um, the convention center is very vibrant. There's lots of color, fun shapes. Um, it's really, um, kind of a, a really special and interesting, um, place to, to have events that you can build on. So, we're looking at taking some of that color and vibrancy out into the landscape so you feel like, you know, you feel like you have arrived, um, in a, in a place that's cohesive and it talks to each other. Um, so, here you can see, we have up at the top, it's soft movement. So, those are grasses, um, oranges and blues and greens. And then color pops, which are annual perennials. Um, again, uh, kind of the purples and oranges. And then structural forms, so that could be, um, plant material that has like a really interesting shape. Um, and then, uh, vertical accents. We know trees are a problem, um, but you also do need some trees to ground the building and ground the site and to skit, make sure everything's scaled. So, we're looking at it strategically where we put trees in places where they frame views, um, but don't get in the way. We are also looking at, um, really vertical, um, either sculpt, trees that have a sculptural form, trees that are vertical so that you still get the height of a tree without it being so substantial it gets in the way of everything and blocks everything. So, so, for example, the columbar sugar maple only gets about 10 feet wide, but 40 feet tall. And it has a really beautiful fall color. And then, uh, sweet bay magnolias are a really good grounding tree. They don't get terribly big, but they've got a sculptural form, beautiful flowers in the spring. And they're a really good kind of background, uh, tree and they're fairly small. And then the last bit is lighting. Um, so, again, lighting is really important for events, uh, spaces. So, we have a variety of lighting, really focused on that entryway, getting people first interested in the site and then wanting to look across. We want them to see across the large parking lot. So, we, we catch their eye at the entryway with the sculptural feature and lighting, um, tree lighting at that moment. And then they see across that to lighting that is, um, vibrant, that's right up against the entryways. Um, and so, they, and doing this in colors, because you will have parking lot lights, so you want color to make your eye look past the sea of parking lot lights to moments in time. And I believe that's it, so. Hopefully, um, uh, yeah, if there's any questions.
All right. Any questions, Mayor Portem?
Well, I just want to say I absolutely love what you're presenting here. I apologize if I seemed a little rude. I was asking Councilman Carr about it. I was like, Councilman, this is a great project. Thank you for, uh, doing this and I guess he'll share more, but he, you didn't know about it. So, um, he'll say what he has to say. But I, I think this is great. Uh, it's kind of interesting how the trees were there and it kind of blocked us from landscaping the way, the GICC campus in this area where it really should be. So, I, I, I like the vision. Um, again, traveling from different cities and going to conventions. We'll be in Salt Lake City in a few days. Um, you know, you see the convention centers and how beautiful the landscape, the greenscape is done. And, uh, I just think that that's a plus for the city. So, basically, you are going to be putting together a project. Your company is, is presenting this to us to put this together for us and how much this was gonna cost and the timeline and all that. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, uh, the construction documents for it.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Well, uh, uh, Councilwoman Mayor Portem, I, I wasn't aware that I was doing this at all, actually. Nice to, tell me your name?
Kristin Lesperance.
Ms. Lesperance? It's good to meet you. I'm Joe Carr. Have we, have we met?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, which is kind of strange being that this is a project in my ward. Now, generally, I may not be aware of this, but everybody else is. And traditionally, uh, we were extended what's called ward courtesy, uh, to that particular council member. Uh, City Manager? I was not made aware of this by you or anybody else. And I don't know why that is. I'm gonna finish and, uh, I didn't ask you about any comment. I'm going to finish and, uh, I didn't ask, I don't need comments on this. In terms of what I'm looking at here, it's not the worst looking thing I've ever seen. But we extend ward courtesy. And did you bother to ask whose district this was?
I did not.
Alright.
Councilmember?
City manager, I'm going to finish speaking, if you don't mind. I'll just say this, I, I certainly do expect the courtesy and respect that any elected official, uh, deserves regarding plans and projects and particularly within my district or anybody else's. Now, in terms of you, and this is not your fault, uh, I have no idea where this came from. But what I do know is that it did not come from Ward too. Uh, city manager, this is not good. Because if I can be so easily overlooked and disregarded, and that means so can any, any one of us. So, uh, what my suggestion is, is, uh, if you'd like to meet and, uh, give a, take a look at this thing. I don't know much about your company, I don't know who you are. Uh, so, uh, I hope this makes sense to you that I'm, uh, a little bit at a loss here, uh, because I haven't been caught up to, to speed, but obviously other folks have. So, uh, we're not going to be voting on this tonight, I didn't see it on the agenda anywhere. Uh, thank you for the presentation. It was interesting. And I'd like to get a chance to meet with you at some other point in time, perhaps, and discuss conceptually what we will do over there and how, how we, how we want to move forward with it.
Councilmember Arnold?
Uh, no comments. Thank you for the present, presentation though, um, the information, uh, the, excuse me, the images. I didn't actually have a hard copy of it, um, and I didn't see it in my packet, so it was kind of hard to follow. But, um, thanks for the information.
Councilmember Gay?
Well, um, I just had some questions about the presentation. For the record, I've just met this amazing firm. They're actually going to be doing a lot of the landscape architecture at the, uh, Botanical Garden. But as far as how y'all got here on this, that's, I don't know about any of that. But I do want to ask you a couple of questions about your slides. Oh, over the years, I've always wanted to see, um, something done at the retention pond that's in front of the building. And so currently, it's a chain length fence, which I thought would kind of tack it for a $100 million building. And so if and when y'all move forward, how you and Councilwoman McCorn and the rest of us work together, I would like to look at some options for that retention pond that's permanent, even if it's just plantings. Because it's not sustainable for us to just keep mowing it and then it grows right back. And I'm not sure, but y'all could research this, but it may also have piping that go across to water the golf course. I know we spent $5 million a while back to run stormwater from the parking lot over to that lake at the golf course. I don't know if that retention pond has anything to do with that. The second thing I was going to say is that, um, I think y'all need to come back with a budget, you're honest? And let us kind of agree on a budget. Because I mean, they can draw something that'll cost you X amount of dollars. But if you get them a budget, the drawing will be kind of centered around a budget. And that may get us all on the same page. Those were my only two comments.
Thank you, councilmember. I think a budget would be great. I think budgets are awesome. And, uh, Ms. Lesperance, I apologize if you were not treated with the courtesy and respect that you deserve as a professional coming before this body. That's not okay. We can ask hard questions, but I think the idea of berating or not showing people professional courtesy is not okay. So I don't want you to feel like you have anything to do with how you were treated today. I appreciated your presentation and I think it gives us a lot to think about in terms of how we move forward to make the GICC an even better, uh, facility that is more welcoming to our visitors. It is, uh, as some of my colleagues talk about, it is just one of our gems in the community. And I think it's really important that we look forward with vision uh, to ensure that it is a place of choice for people who are doing conventions for years to come. And that, that goes to plans like this, it goes to putting a roof on the building. It goes to all the things that will make it, uh, attractive for us as we move forward. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. And I believe that is the conclusion of our workshop session, and we'll see everybody at 7:30.